I call the City of Charlottesville School Board Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can we stand for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I think I kind of jumped ahead. We do have roll. But as we are on roll, I just wanted to introduce our new student member, Frida Sander. And the way we do it here at Charlottesville is that we, there's a process to select three students to serve throughout the year, and each student serves some three months, and we try to mix it up with juniors and seniors, and so that, you know, that we can get a good mixture of input from students. So welcome aboard. I don't know if you wanted to say anything? You're fine, okay. So, I'm welcome aboard, and we're glad that this process that we have of having students on the board has been invaluable. The input that we've had throughout the last couple of years has just been immeasurable as we sit up here talking, and a student will come with an insight that we hadn't thought of at all. So feel free to chime in anytime, Ms. Sander. The next item on agenda is approve of the proposed agenda. Can I get a motion?
It's a move.
It's been moved and seconded by Leah. Any changes or amendments to the agenda? If not, all in favor please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Great. Next item on agenda is comments from members of the community. And at this point, we only have one person to speak, and it's Colette Blount, and she is a former school board member, so welcome back home. And of course, you know the ground rules, three minutes.
I tried not to stretch it too much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Wade, Superintendent Atkins, School Board, and Student Representative, Ms. Sander. I've been out of the recent loop teaching in China for the last two years. I'm sorry to have missed the two recent community forums on equity in the division. I'm fascinated by the circuitous aspects of how we enact change, ranging from how we come to identify an issue all the way to its resolution. I would add that there is something after resolution, remembrance. Jorge Santayana said it as, "Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Unlike Churchill's later statement, "Those who fail to learn from history are condemned to repeat it." The act of remembering is an ongoing practice and requires conscious effort. These are notes embedded in the minutes from the December 2015 board meeting. Having a committee, quote, "Having a committee on addressing equity, one that might ensure that our programs are deliberate and broad with their outreach." A case in point is the new outreach position in the Sigma Lab. This was a budgetary allotment last year, referring to, I guess, 2014, one of its goals being to increase the diversity of students who access that space. If this initiative is successful, then perhaps other programs within our division may see ways to revamp and reinvigorate their approach and commitment to equity, end quote. The lab deserves recognition for its deliberate effort to broaden access. I haven't kept up with it recently, but that was what it was intended to do back in 2015. I had hoped that targeted focus would be applied to other areas of our division. I tried finding more of the robust conversations the board had back then. Unfortunately, the more than 100 podcasts of the board proceedings from August 2009, which is when the board began collecting digital minutes, from 2009 until November 2015 are missing, or at least not at the links referenced in the minutes. Within the June 2015 minutes, there is this toward addressing the inequities of the Quest program. Quote, "Ms. Blount made a motion, seconded by Mr. Wade, that regardless of their cog app performance, students from traditionally under-recognized groups by socioeconomic status or language who have been identified by their kindergarten and first grade teachers as having heightened interest in inquisitiveness receive all of the gifted services that the division has to offer. Upon a roll call vote being taken, the vote was Ms. Blount, Ms. Lawford, Ms. McKeever, Ms. Neal, Ms. Perier, and Mr. Wade voting yes. The motion carried 6-0. The intention behind the motion was that students should have full access to services in spite of our inability to secure a valid identification instrument. The intent was not to fill the Quest pool coffers to overflow, but rather to fill the first chairs we are missing. I shared that the Identification Committee had considered unique identification methods like written transcriptions by which Clark, for example, saw an increase in identification of under-recognized students by almost 200 percent. One budget season, the topic of funding for Spanish language coursework came up. I offered that the rationale for this funding renewal and expansion was its potential to minimize the distance between the standard and advanced diplomas earned by students of color and those with socioeconomic barriers. That any positive impact of the program's success would be seen years later as the first students continued on into middle and high school and then graduation. That year, I believe, we secured appropriate funding in our commitment to equity and access." And I'm almost done. "As the designers of things like the foreign language diploma requirements or how we ensure equitable access to top-tier programs, we are remiss if we don't recognize our ability to alter or eradicate these things that serve as barriers. Having short and long-range protocols in place, protocols that require we be deliberate and remind us to be proactive rather than reactive, is vital. Remembering can have its challenges, but it's in our collective best interests that we do. I commend the board and the community for their efforts at addressing this issue. Nationwide initiatives like the Fairfax one before this board today hold promise. It's what we do with these initiatives that will bear out the veracity of our intentions. I hope that the efforts are fruitful so that these lessons are learned well and that they are also remembered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Colette.
And good luck with that.
We're going to have a discussion on this today, and this is a tough nail to crack, but we are steadfast in addressing this as a board, so thank you. Ms. Blount was the only one signed up to speak. Are there others from the public who'd like to speak? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. There being none, we will go on to another kind of public hearing that we have in for the 2019-2020 budget, just kind of first look at it. We will have many public hearings on that and public input processes on that as well, but I just wanted to give an opportunity for the public if anyone wanted to speak with that. Some of the things that Colette addressed and that we've heard at the last two community meetings will be discussed during the budget processes as well. But seeing no one want to speak on the budget, I would then go to the next item on agenda, which is board member comments, and Ms. Lawford, I will start with you if you have. Well, I didn't want to start with the new member.
I know. I know. So it's been a busy month, as every month has been, obviously. I still am on the Grace Task Force, which is the gang reduction through community engagement, and unfortunately, they have canceled the past three months of meetings. I just, so you know, I have been getting the emails, we just haven't had a meeting. So I've also attended the Title I meeting where we talk about Title I funds from the federal government for interventions of math and reading. So we were talking about the new adoption of the textbooks and the new writing program, the Hawkins Writing Program. I think that will be covered by Seville tomorrow at some point this month. And we really talked about, we're doing so many different things, and making sure that we communicate that with the public is really critical because there is a lot going on, and the teachers are doing a lot, and just assuring the public that we are facing a lot of challenges and with great efficacy as well. And I also took the time to go to the Hispanic leader, it was actually, I think it was called Hispanic Conference, and it was an all-day Saturday event, fascinating. And I met a lot of great people that are willing to do more for our schools. So they asked me to come back to their leadership conference, and I was able to speak with many of the families with children in schools. Unfortunately, most of them are from the county, but we also talked about interpreters for schools. And I really, I know we're coming up on budget session, I think we need to be looking more at hiring someone to be doing that for our back-to-school nights. There's just so many times that we would need someone of that skill. So, and I know that because I just spent three hours trying to converse with people, and it was very difficult, and I can see this is really necessary. Also, I met someone that wanted to do some mentoring with our avid students, so he'll be getting back to us. It's a doctor at UVA. And then also, I met with a previous CHS graduate. She is now at PVCC, and she is running workshops to help migrant families fill out the FAFSA. So they will be running the workshops January and February, and, you know, that was another eye-opening experience of all the different things that have to be done. So she's probably going to come to the board in January and talk to us about that, advertising the workshops, and hopefully working with our school counselors to help migrant families. So, the other thing we did was a conference, which, are we going to talk about that at the end? You know, the conference we all went to?
Oh, the ESPN.
Because usually, we have like, kind of a long talking time, so I could wait with my comments on that.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, board comments now and at the end, so whenever you choose to talk about it, it's up to you.
Do you guys have a preference? Should I wait?
To talk a little about it.
So I, I mean, actually, this was a great, I went to really great workshops, and, well, it's very in-depth, so I'll do it at the end so that we can really have a dialogue about it. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, James, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I also attended the school board conference last month in Williamsburg. It's my first one. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I thought it was quite informative. I attended several workshops, one workshop being the workshop on equity, which I found was very interesting, and hopefully, we're going to, as a board, look at some of those things they're doing in Fairfax and sort of adopt some of those, that model as well. Also, I got a chance to hear Coach Carter, if you all remember the movie Lean on Me, that Morgan Freeman played his character. He was great. He was entertaining, informative, and engaging. So the room was packed during his presentation, so I thoroughly enjoyed that. Also, I was invited by the Director of Teacher Education and the Dean of Students at Murray Baldwin University last month to speak to future educators. I spoke to two classes of students who are interested or somewhat interested in going into the field of education. It was inspiring. The kids asked lots of good questions, and also, I spoke to a small group, Mrs. Perier also accompanied me on that trip to Murray Baldwin University, and also spoke to a small group of students, these students that were accelerated, that were in the accelerated program graduating, I think, three instead of four years, and a lot of them had already started doing internships and practicums. So they were very interested in my experience as an educator of 39 years. Also, we had our VMA retreat. I'm also in that committee. The Blackmail Initiative, Daniel Farley coordinated that. Dr. Selina Kozart facilitated that retreat. It was very interesting. And we came out with several 30-30 things called strategic doing. There were nine areas that we discussed at the end of the retreat, education, building the VMA team, the national affiliation, mentorship, youth development, criminal justice reform and research, and social justice facilitation. And each person was assigned to work on two of those strategic planning interests, and I will be the spokesperson for the organizations such as doing radio spots, TV spots, using my voice to do that, and also plans for partnering with the schools. I will be doing it along with Dr. Atkins, who was also in attendance at the retreat. So it was a very good retreat led by Dr. Kozart.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and other board members. I would first like to say thank you to Dr. Atkins and Dr. Irizari for making it possible for two of our three student reps to attend the Student Board Representative Leadership portion of the Virginia School Board Association. There are other school divisions that have student reps, and in recent years, one of the pre-conference workshops deals with student leaders, and we were able to have two of ours represented, and I understand that they represented us very well, and I just want to say thank you to both of you for making that possible so that they could be there to listen, learn, and share their experiences. As I said to you last month, I believe, I'm not sure, I am also a member of the Public Education Foundation Board, also known as PEF. We are working to expand our board membership, which includes parents or other community members, and I've been fortunate enough to recommend several people, and hopefully, they will accept. We are now in PEF revamping our website, so if you go, you will see the new and improved website, and I think, well, I don't think, I know that the students from Computers for Kids are the ones that we are partnering with to revamp our website. And Computers for Kids not only services those students in the City of Charlottesville but Albemarle County, and I felt that that would be another way that we could collaborate and show that this is a dual effort. Dr. Atkins and Dr. Haas are taking the lead on the instructional side, and hopefully, if things continue to roll along, we will be having a wellness activity in the fall of the year, so stay tuned because everyone is expected to participate. And we, once again, this summer, will be doing a STEM camp, a one-week camp, that Dr. Richards and I will coordinate with the help of Susan Donahue, who is his assistant in the School of Engineering. And last year, I was very, very pleased with our kickoff, and we will, once again, be having approximately 24, no more than 30 students, and we will be working with the coordinators in the science area to identify the students, and we're currently working to improve our application in order that that get out to the schools after the holiday break, in order to give students and teachers and parents a chance to get the application, read it, ask any questions, and get them back in so they can get selected. The City of Promise is up and running. You may have seen, they have hired two new staff members, and they're working very hard. We're seeing a lot of positive things happening at Walker and at Beaufort, and I'm looking forward to exciting things and the reorganization of the board makeup. We are now a board, no longer a steering committee. As things develop, you go to the next level. So they're developing bylaws and electing officers and all of the things that you do to have boards, and they're very appreciative of all that we do in supporting them in that effort. And that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Sherry?
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Frida's. We're so happy to have you with us. I wanted to mention a couple of things regarding the State School Board Conference. Several of us went, and we probably will be talking about it, but just a couple of takeaways for me. I went to a session organized by Hampton City Schools regarding their Career Academy program as a way for them to engage students in learning communities that lead them to, hopefully, their professional interests beyond high school. And, you know, it was very good. One takeaway from that, for me, was the importance of strategic partnerships with the city government, the community, and with businesses in the community to make that program successful. So the school division can't do that by themselves. I also went to the program organized by Fairfax County Schools on equity. Their program was called Project Momentum, and we'll be talking a lot more about that and about, you know, the process that they are going through and have gone through to work on an equity framework for their school division. One thing, one takeaway for me was the comment that, when asked, why has their program been successful? The response was that what we do is driven by data, not politics. And that was something for us all to think about, I believe. And then I also went to another session on facilities and divisions who are thinking about whether to renovate or rebuild or build new buildings, and as we will be getting back to that issue very soon, we have to do that, so just learning more about the process that they went through. And then a couple of other things, not at the conference. There's a group at UVA, and they have invited and included several of us in the Charlottesville, Albemarle, and surrounding school divisions. The group is on, it's called Reenvisioning the Middle Years, and it's focused on middle school, and, you know, how do we, how do we really look at middle school now and, you know, and really make it into a learning model that works for kids? And they had a meeting last week, was really interesting, and had to do with student engagement and what kind of learning environments helps students feel engaged, and then when they're engaged, lead to success. So one of the things, one takeaway there was, research has shown that student engagement in the learning process peaks during late elementary school, and then it begins to fall. And there are, there's a large percentage of students in middle and even on into high school who don't feel engaged in the learning process. So, you know, how do you begin to turn that around? And so this is a wonderful resource in the community, you know, led by UVA, and we have the opportunity to participate in that. And then finally, a couple of days ago, I went to the meeting at Walker for parents of current fourth graders who will be fifth graders next year, and it was the most upbeat, wonderful session, and I'm just so impressed with all of the work that that team is doing to create, you know, a very, you know, wonderful sense of community at that school. And so I, you know, it was really great to be there, and they're working very, very hard. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you, Ms. Blount, for coming today. It was so great to see you, and I appreciate, in particular, being reminded because I think my memory is failing, but also, I remembering is, as soon as you said, December 2015, I was like, oh, yeah. So I really appreciate that, and I hope that, because I have been in Quest, and I did go to the Quest Subcommittee meeting this week, and it was, you know, a very robust conversation, and just want to thank the parents and teachers of the, in the Quest program who are really earnestly looking at how we can evolve and make the Quest program, you know, more diverse and include more, more people, more children in it, but also, is this the right model for our division? So we just have a lot, we just had a robust conversation, there's just a lot to talk about, and I look forward to kind of continuing dialogue at the Subcommittee level, but also during the budget session. I think we just, we're kind of talking about it in multiple venues and committees, so I appreciate everybody's real commitment to the discussion and hopefully, come up with some good action items during the budget. And then I just, I also went to VSBA, I look forward to talking about that a little bit more later. Went to also the CHSO concert last week, which was brilliant, as usual, and then I want to make everybody aware that next Thursday is the choir concert. Just check our calendar on the website because there's a lot of holiday activities that are usually free and fun for the families, fun for families, so, and they are remarkably well-done. Our students are super talented, and it's a great way for them to be showcased. And Heather's, the musical, the theater production starts tonight. That is not free, but it does start tonight, and it runs this weekend, so if you have an opportunity to catch it, I hear it's brilliant, especially the set. No, um, but I, yeah, so that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you. Lisa?
Ms. Blount, thank you very much. I was not on the board at that time, so I appreciate hearing your perspective, and I would, I would look forward to speaking some more, but very powerful as far as remembering, so thank you for that. Want to also welcome Frida's, so thank you for joining us. Look forward to hearing what you might have to share in your time here. Also, as I think we all were at the school board conference in Williamsburg, so again, I will look forward to talking about that towards the end of the meeting. Appreciate everybody's input and feedback relating to our equity conversations and the ongoing forums, so thank you to everybody who was able to show up at the forums and participate online as well. And then quickly, I was invited to participate as a, or be present as a school board member, representative, I guess, to the Southwood Boys and Girls Club, and every year, they have an opportunity where they do a local and then state and regional, I guess it's a, I don't know if it's a competition, if it's the right word, but they invite their kids to come and present and write a story or write an essay and then present it to a panel of judges. And then I was able to participate in that, and I just found it, just overwhelmingly impressed by these young youths, and so it was youth and then teens who, two separate groups that were able to come in and share their stories with us. You know, and they're focusing on different things like outstanding leadership and service, their academic excellence and what it means to live a healthy life. So it was a great opportunity, and I was very grateful to be able to participate in that.
Frida, you, you still, that's fine, I just wanted to give you, I've attended. I just want to chime in and say a couple of things. I don't do this every month, I just want to give an idea of some of the things I've been doing the last month or so. I've attended several K-Tech meetings for planning, and some exciting things, playing with that. I'm the current chair of that board as well. And as part of that, I attended kind of a technical education type of meeting in Louisa County High School, and I know Rosa and the principal, and we had a lot of staff there. They're doing some really innovative and some exciting things there, and I saw you and Eric and your staff huddled over, just taking tons of notes, and when I left, you guys were still there, so I'm sure we'll be seeing some more information like that because we know that, that, you know, students learn in a lot of different ways, a lot of different opportunities, so I'm looking forward to seeing some different ways we can do that, not only here, but with the K-Tech board. Last Friday, I just had opportunity to visit Johnson Elementary School, and that's a special place to go if you, particularly on Fridays, because they use the opportunity to kind of sing the school song, and I don't know if you've ever been there for that, but it's a real special time when they do it over the intercom. And I had two young African-American males do it, two leaders of the school, kind of leading that, so it was really, it was really special to see that there. It's a, it's a nice place to go, just to visit if you have an opportunity. Spent some time at Walker this week, just meeting with the principal and some community. I see Ms. Bennett is here to talk about some potential amenities to at Walker and some potential there, and some really exciting things that we just kind of have on the drawing board, there's still a lot of work to do with that. Had a chance to visit Beaufort and Venable and Clark, had a class meeting, the kind of after-school meeting, and did the Virginia School Board Conference, and just, and And just, and just in general, throughout the, you know, on any given day, several opportunities that I think we all get this input on, on equity and some ideas that we have and that they have that want to share with us. And these are things I'm sure that many of us have been taken down, and when we have our discussion, when we have budget, that they will come up again. And I encourage, you know, people, whether, even if you think it's an inopportune time where we're in the store or something, don't, you know, at least I can personally say, don't be reluctant to come up and share your ideas with me. I want to, I want to hear it, I want to hear, we don't have all the ideas up here. We have a wonderful community that has some great ideas, and we want to hear it all the time. So that being said, we will go on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moving properly second. Any additional changes to the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, please say yes. All opposed, please say no. The next item we have on agenda is approval of the superintendent contract. At this point, Dr. Atkins' contract is scheduled to end in June or July 1st of 2019. We usually approve it, the extension, a few months earlier, but we've just been really busy. But this is an opportunity that we would like to extend it to 2023. That's the longest that the state allows us to have a contract for any superintendent. And I think this will, I know it'll make you the longest-serving superintendent for the city of Charlottesville, probably at this point, one of the longest, if not the longest in the state. I haven't been able to determine that, but I can, I think that, I can say that I believe that it is. Happened with the direction of the district and initiatives going on. And so that being said...
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the extension of Dr. Atkins' contract for an additional four years, beginning July 1 of 2019 through June of 2023, I believe it is, June 30th of 2023. And I would just like to say that approximately 13 years ago, Mr. Wade and I ran a campaign to be on the School Board. And right after we won the campaign, an announcement was made that we had a new superintendent, and her name was Dr. Rosa Atkins. And she is from the Commonwealth of Virginia, which I think has stood us in good stead. She began her career in Virginia. She was in an elementary school, so she loves little elementary school children. And she continued to move up through the ranks from an instructor to a principal to an assistant superintendent, an associate superintendent, and then she said, I want to be a superintendent. Who knew? And at the time that she came to the city of Charlottesville, we were faced with many challenges. And she never wavered, she rose to the challenge, she listened, she made suggestions, she never said, we will do it my way, but she moved and operated in a collaborative sense. Many people were disturbed and upset because they didn't see her every day at everything. But that did not mean that she was not doing what we hired her to do. She's a person that walks softly and carries a big stick. She works hard, she expects a lot of all of us, but she also expects us to take our time to reflect, to listen, to rejuvenate. Our school division under her leadership has grown. When she came, all groups of students were flatlined, as I like to say. And over her 13 years, each group has gradually improved. Yes, we have much to do. Yes, we have much to learn. But even before the word transparency became the word of the day, she believed in transparency. If you had a problem and you told her you had a problem, her response was, well, what should we do about it? Or what do you think we should do about it? You just could not go in and complain. You had to have a solution. And you may not have a solution, but you should at least have a suggestion. And I have seen growth in her, I have seen growth in our school division, but I'm most proud of how, after our community suffered, and all of us are suffering from PTSD to various degrees, she once again rose to the challenge. And everyone in the Commonwealth talked about our convocation when we came back to school in the fall of 2017. And she and her team developed something to show all of us that we are important, that we all matter. Zip codes aren't it, socioeconomics aren't it, parents' professions aren't it. But what is it is you, your heart, and what you believe in. And no matter what you say, no matter how we are doing or are not doing, her heart is in it. We speak all the time about 21st century learning skills. And I feel, under the direction of our current superintendent, we will continue to move forward. It may not be to your liking, but we will be moving forward.
So I, I think that can be considered as a motion. We need a second now.
I'd like the secondary motion.
So this is...
Are we up for discussion?
Yes.
I'd like the secondary motion.
Okay.
Are we up for discussion?
Yep.
So I think it's really timely that Colette is here tonight and said about remembrance. I think it's important to remember where our community was when Dr. Atkins came. I think Juan and Leah were the first elected School Board. Previous to that, it was an appointment. And because of lots of things, the community decided that it needed to be an elected position. And, you know, I think she's brought us through that, of course, I wasn't here then, but my kids were still not born, so. But I remember reading about in the paper, and actually, I was a teacher in Louisa, and I came out to actually meet you, you probably don't remember this at all, at a community meeting, because I, I think everybody here recognizes the importance of the leadership of the school division. And I've really appreciated working with you over the past seven years. And I think it's to Ms. Perrier's point, of the successes the school division has seen in the past 10 years, actually more, I guess, but it's really remarkable to have the highest graduation rate ever in the city. It's just something that is amazing. You know, when I was at the Hispanic Conference, we were talking about graduation rates nationally for Hispanic students is 45 percent, and our school division is 90 percent. So these are like very hard-fought successes of our children, of our staff, and of our superintendents. So I am grateful you're here and excited to vote for this.
Other comments?
Well, yeah, I would love to express my appreciation to Dr. Atkins and my enthusiasm for her commitment to our division. This is not an easy community right now, and I mean all of Charlottesville. It's, it's difficult in many ways, there are lots of challenges and lots of, you know, strong emotions. And I think that it's, you know, it's to our great benefit that Dr. Atkins has committed herself to steer this ship now and to continue to work with us and to be committed to the success of our division in these difficult times. It's really not an easy thing. And, you know, we see the things that she does publicly, but there's so much else that goes on behind the scenes. It's very, very hard. And I think we are very lucky to have you with us, and I'm so pleased that we will have you for four more years.
Dr. Atkins, I just want to say that I am also delighted and excited that you've decided to continue your tenure as Superintendent of the Charlottesville Public Schools. As I stated in the newspaper, we need a steady hand at this, we need someone, a steady hand to guide this ship. And you're the person that we need at this point in time. So congratulations, and I'm looking forward to hopefully working with you for another four years.
Okay. Any other comments?
So I just wanted to say that, you know, ditto to whatever things have been said. After working with you for, you know, many years, I feel completely comfortable in your leadership and your direction of the system, and I look forward to continue this, this journey.
Thank you.
All right. That being said, no further discussion. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Okay, thank you. The next item...
I just want to say thank you to the board. I do look forward to continuing to work with the board. We have come a long way. We've done a lot. And I will say, putting aside the progress that we've made, there will be a time and a place to discuss that. But I do say to our community, I would have liked to have done anything other than have the New York Times article published. That particular article was very difficult for our board, for our community, and for everyone. You want to be in the headlines, but you certainly don't want to be in the headlines with an accusation that you have not done what you intended or are charged with doing for the students under your charge. I will say to our teachers and our principals and to our entire community, thank you. Thank you to our teachers for all that they have done continuously for our students. We are so proud of you and proud of our students also. We have a lot of work to do. Although I did not, would not have ever chosen to have a New York Times article written, I say thank you to them. Thank you for writing that article. I'm not sure what the intent was, but I can tell you something very good will come out of it. Our community now is in a position in which we're having some very tough, difficult discussions. And we may not have gotten to these discussions as quickly as we are now without the article. So for that, I am grateful. I'm also grateful to the School Board and their dedication and willingness with our community and our faculty and staff to enter into those conversations and to start making plans. Where do we go from here? And how do we move ourselves in a position, whether it be the New York Times, the Washington Post, the next article that is written about the achievement of our students will be one to discuss and to talk about the model that we have put in place for equity throughout our school division. I look forward to working with this board, and I also look forward to continuing the work with our community. And thank you also for our senior leadership at the central office, Jim Henderson, Kim Powell, all of our staff. I can't call everyone's name right now, Renee Hoover, everyone who has worked so diligently to make sure that we have the staff on board, Gary Blair, that we have the staff on board to do the work that needs to be done. And thank you to our community.
Thank you. The next item on agenda is equity policy discussion, Dr. Atkins.
So we have been, we've held two community forums to talk about equity, and very recently, the School Board and I had an opportunity to attend a session at the Virginia School Boards Association Conference, and a session hosted by Fairfax County Schools. And their session discussed equity in their school division. And we found out during that session that they have spent quite a prolonged period of time working with their county government, developing a, an equity policy that reflects the desire not only of the school system, but of the county government also. So the entire Fairfax community and governing bodies have entered into an agreement for equity, calling it One Fairfax. We were pretty impressed with that policy, and we brought that policy back, and I'd like the board to consider entering into a discussion about the policy. I do believe that Charlottesville City governing body would also be interested in working with us on the development of a policy that would not only affect the work that we do in our school system, but also affect what goes on throughout our community. The policy that Fairfax developed was one that focuses on early childhood education. It also focused on and talked a great deal about inclusive cultures in their school system, achievement across the board in all segments and throughout all programs, workforce development, the economic development amongst their citizens, housing, and to make sure that they had good health care for all of their citizens. So all of those elements intertwined would ensure that they have a healthy, thriving community. They used an impressive process that I would want our School Board to consider and our community to consider. They engaged their community and got input from the community on the policy. And then after getting input from the community and developing aspects of the policy, they put in the policy that they would have training that would involve the school system and the, their county personnel. And that they would also develop some tools that would help them in the application of the policy. They would also make sure that they had a segment of the policy that discussed their policy developments from that point forward, that it would consider race and social equity in all of their policies. They had an action plan, how they'd go about implementing the policy, and then they also had an accountability framework. So with that overview of the One Fairfax policy, I would recommend to the board that you enter into a discussion about the feasibility of developing a policy and perhaps a One Charlottesville policy for our School Board and for our, working with the city, for the city to be involved also.
Okay, so we can have some discussion on this, but I just had a couple of questions just during the session. How did Fairfax, how did they dealt with, you know, things that's kind of, you know, traditionally not inside the scope of a school, like you mentioned healthcare, thinking about housing and transportation? I mean, we're only 10 square miles, and we, that's an obstacle to us. Fairfax is huge, and they, you know, I think they have a million students in that district. We have...
Hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, never a million people in the county. So did they talk about that detail at the session?
They didn't talk about it, but in reading through their policy, I think the way they address and deal with transportation, housing, is the fact that it is one policy that covers both the county and the school system. So their governing, their Board of Supervisors, this policy covers how they develop their policies and how they go about decision-making also. So it's not just for the School Board, it's for their Board of Supervisors also.
You did mention that city, I mean, that the local government too wanted to...
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So Jennifer, did you? I mean, you can just chime in.
Well, I would like to, I just, I think it's the process, it'd be interesting to talk to Fairfax specifically about how they moved towards this policy. I mean, I think it probably did involve a committee of people to, to sit down and just have, you know, just as a work group, basically. I'm sure that's part of the plan, but, and maybe that work group could talk specifically to Fairfax and/or have them come visit us and talk about how they actually developed that.
I think that would be a great idea, a work group, perhaps led by one of our board members, or board members being an integral part of that work group.
Right.
Would be great.
Sort of similar to the Blue Ribbon Task Force.
Yes.
As a, just an example, but not just city county, city council reps and School Board reps, but also community members, all stakeholder. I think it would be useful to kind of engage multiple stakeholder groups to have the buy-in that... that is required to make sure we have accountability in the future.
I agree.
Dr. Atkins, I find this very interesting that we are talking about an equity policy after the article in the New York Times. I don't know how many of you remember, but several years ago, I would say maybe 10 or 12 years ago, there was an article in the Washington Post about the Fairfax County Public Schools. And they were talking about an achievement gap policy, a problem. And people were like, oh, Fairfax County, we have an achievement gap problem? Yes, you did, and you may still have one, and it may be getting less than it was. So, it seems that when those issues come up, different things happen. And so, I don't know exactly when they began the work on their equity policy, but I just find the juxtaposition of, we've been talking about achievement gap, we're talking about equity and diversity, they had achievement gap, now they have a policy. So, maybe there's some things in there that we may also learn and glean. Although I don't think it's going to take us that long to develop a policy, but I think that those two things coming out in national papers about local school divisions was very interesting.
So, Rosa, can you just, for my information, and probably for the public as well, can you give us an idea if we had a policy similar to this in place today? What our school system would look like and feel like? How would it be different? What would our, what would some budget initiatives look like?
Well, the policy would require us with every decision, each of the decisions that we make, budgetary decisions that we make, that we consider equity in making those decisions. So, if we were putting in a new position, we would have to ask ourselves, how does that impact all of our students? And making sure that the position that we put in, we have a plan, that any services or programs that come along with that position are programs that would actually be equitable across all of the demographics in our school division and whom we're recruiting, that we keep in mind. We set realistic but hard percentages that we are trying to attain in the diversity in our school division, that we would set benchmarks for ourselves in many different areas, and be very public in posting those benchmarks and helping, letting the community help us with the progress and watch our progress.
So, I mean, I just felt like before we were being as aggressive as we can, in particular, I know this of hiring, you know, minority teachers. Would this be like an extra incentive or something to attract? I know there's some legally, we can't like, you know, certain things we can and can't do along those lines. How would that look recruiting?
I think sometimes we say we have put in measures that are equitable, and we leave it, and we continue on with business as usual. I think a policy like this causes us to revisit equity in all of our discussions, to make sure that it is a part of just our everyday business, and that we not accept the status quo of any of our services or programs. We ask the hard questions. If it's a great program, is it a great program for all of our students? And are we making sure that we are allowing, such as our Quest program, with the discussion that has been going on with the Quest program, it's a good program? But we're now asking ourselves, have we made sure that we have given access and we have processes in place to encourage and to make sure that a diverse pool of students are represented in the Quest program?
So, I have another follow-up question. What does Fairfax's policy say, like, you know, they say that they want or we want, let's say 20% of our teachers, or whatever that number is. What, if we don't reach it, is it an aspiration, or?
It's an, it would be. It's, and the board would be setting those goals and benchmarks.
And we would get an update or whatever, because it's ironic that it led us here, because that's something that she really pushed us. It's a board that, you know, every new initiative, we need to see at some point, is that program, is that initiative, is it working? We need some outcome measurements, some way to measure that. Yes, Sherry?
One of the things about the Fairfax policy that I think is really important and important for us to consider as we embark on this process, this is a policy, it's not just a policy of the school division, it's a policy of the government as well. It's a policy of the whole community. And I think, when I think about that, I think about how, you know, having a policy like that where we're all entering into it as partners and stakeholders, it would inform, I think, budget priorities beyond our traditional request to the city government. So, it would perhaps, it would perhaps influence things like, okay, if we want to invest in early childhood education, so what does that look like? So, could the city invest more money in an early childhood center here? That would really take our early childhood programs to another level. Things like that, that involve, you know, the whole community and not just focusing on, you know, do the schools have an achievement gap in reading? It's something much broader than that. And so, I'm hoping that we can embrace that broader view of equity that are what we do here, you know, and we have important responsibilities here, but we're part of a community, and we're all in this together. And so, we have to all set our priorities accordingly.
Mr. Chair, another example would be with the workforce development, school system partnering with businesses that the city is attracting to our community, that we have curricula that's flexible enough in order to respond to the needs of those businesses who are coming into our community, and making sure that the development of a skill set that the businesses desire, we're developing that across a diverse group of students, so that when they exit our school system, they're ready to go into those jobs, into those businesses, and they have the skill set that's necessary. Or they continue their post-secondary education and later be able to enter into those fields. We've talked a lot in our community about jobs in our community. This would help us to get the jobs in our community and have the workforce in our community amongst our black citizens, our white citizens, our, all of our Hispanic citizens that can go into those jobs.
So, can I, so I wonder if what we can do is invite, have some of our board members meet with some of the city councils, see if they're interested in pursuing a One Seville policy, and then identifying some stakeholders that we can then, if they agree, that we can then engage stakeholders and then kind of invite Fairfax. Hopefully, one of their first agenda items would be then to invite Fairfax to talk about their process. And of course, this is all happening presumably at the same time with our discussions with, around equity in the budget with the public. I don't, I would prefer, you know, if the city council is reticent at all, that we just continue forward, trying, you know, implementing our own equity policy, but that we first just engage with them to see if they would be interested in supporting a One Charlottesville equity policy.
I think that might be a nice city council, school board luncheon item, because I feel that we need to have that discussion, and I think as many people as can be around the table to hear it once, and we're all hearing it together, we're all hearing our, the questions, concerns, or what have we. I know in the past, when we've had these luncheons, there's always been an issue regarding a qualm, but we're never enacting any business, we're never taking action on anything. And I think that whoever can come on whatever the appointed date is for the luncheon or for the meeting, maybe it can't be around the luncheon, maybe it has to be a late afternoon meeting.
We have one January 23rd.
Well, maybe that would-
The 25th? Oh, the 23rd, yeah.
Well, then maybe that would be when we would have this discussion.
Yeah. But I don't know if we have come up with the topic, but I think that that would be an ideal topic. And we also can see how the University of Virginia, you know, Fairfax is much bigger, and the impact of George Mason, you know, I know they have a lot of the universities there, but that's the biggest state, you know, university that we have.
Their community college is very active in that area.
Yeah, but just to see how that can play as well.
I was just thinking that many of us are in committees that are, you know, broad-ranging, like the Grace Task Force, you know, like-
Blackmail Initiative.
Yeah, Blackmail Initiative. So, anyway, I'm just saying, yes, we should talk to city council first, and then the committees that we're in are ready. Maybe this could be part of what those committees are doing too.
I just quickly, yeah, I think that's a great idea. I have to say, in attending that seminar workshop, I mean, I was surprised once we looked at the policy, because the policy, I didn't realize it was a school-county collaboration as far as the policy. So, I think, I think it's a great idea. Also, I know Jennifer forwarded, but we had gotten emails.
I was wondering.
I felt like, okay, somebody was sending this to us intentionally, but the timing, we just received-
The Cube.
The Cube email, and they're gathering, you know, a folder, a library of different school divisions' policies on equity. And I haven't had a chance to look through all of them, but, and then there was also a follow-up email from the members of the State Board of Education from Maryland. And so, they just put out an equity policy for the State Board of Education there. So, I think that might be interesting to just look at that, you know, and bring that into our discussions as far as, or if there are differences. But I think there's some, probably some strengths from what I was gathering just through the first couple of pages of that. And then, just out of curiosity, I did open up the folder of Cube's policies, and Charlottesville was in there, and I was like, oh, wouldn't be able to see what we've got going.
But it was older, much older, several years older.
And it was just the fact, like you mentioned, that the word equity was in, I think, our strategic plan.
Oh, yes.
So, it's time to update this.
Yeah. I didn't realize that we didn't have an equity policy until very recently. I assumed we did.
I think as we've engaged in the discussion about equity, what we realize is equity is something that, in order to affect equity in our school system, we must affect all of the institutions that actually touch a child's life, services and policies that touch a child's life or a family's life. So, in order to strengthen the student for school, we must strengthen them for home also. So, having the city and the school board work together, I think is ideal, and hopefully at some point, our state also will consider a policy on equity.
Absolutely, I agree. I wonder if that's something that we can talk about with respect to our advocacy at the state level, like in January, when some of us are there. Again, it's just never, I mean, I feel like we've been talking about equity policy, because I've been going to all of these equity conferences for, at least four years. And I know working, I went, I talked to Ms. Bump before she left about, and about how we didn't have a policy, so I'm trying to get one. But it feels like what I, what I'm trying to say is that I would like, even if we are, the city is not committed to it like we are, that we move forward to trying to make an equity policy.
I did mention the equity policy to some of the city officials, and they seemed to be very receptive to engaging in a conversation about equity, because I think their concern is in the same place that ours is. So, if we bring our synergies together, it would be beneficial to our whole community.
I think people are finally recognizing that equality, diversity, and equity are not the same. They may work in tandem, but each one of them is different. And I think often energies may go to one or the other, and thinking that that makes things equitable, and it may not necessarily do that.
So, what's the next steps?
I'd be more than happy to contact some of the city, make sure that we get this on the agenda for the board and the city council work session in January, and then start talking, thinking about a process that I'll bring back to the board chair to review that process for how we would move this forward. I would also recommend that as we're moving forward on the equity, that although we want our community input, we don't want the process to be so long that we end up a year from now without a policy. Let the process be inclusive, but one in which we can see an endpoint in a policy if the board votes on that would be in place.
Yes, I think that's critical. It's a great point. So, is that, so does everybody feel comfortable with moving forward for the lunch in January with city council and Dr. Atkins working with the chair?
Yeah, I think so. You know, perhaps if we're able, if we're able to have some individual conversations before that, I think that would be helpful as well to make that successful.
Yeah. So, if there's some information that we think that, you know, in addition to what Dr. Atkins mentioned, that we want, because I'm sure that council members want to, you know, if that's okay with them, that they're going to be probably requesting certain information from Mike Murphy and, you know, to be presenting and talk with you about, you know, but if we have any other information that we think we want to be part of that, we can let Dr. Atkins know, and so we can kind of have that, maybe even to discuss beforehand, I mean, to read before the meeting. But, good, I think this is a great first start to have, you know, not completely reinventing the will. I'm sure Fairfax County did a lot of research and on this, you know, thing. I worked for them when I first got out of grad school for you in the Transportation Department, so did a lot of work with the schools when I was up there, the Transportation Department, but-
Oh, that wasn't controversial.
Yeah, no.
You're used to all that.
Yes. Okay.
I just also, I mean, because I already said it, but I also want to make sure that we're, we're going to also engage the stakeholders in this discussion, and hopefully on the committee, whatever kind of bubbles out of this luncheon, you know, we'll also engage large segment of the community and stakeholders in this community, so, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, guys. Great, great first discussion on this, and this is where we have many more to come. The next item on the agenda is a business and financial kind of routine report. Is that?
Calendar.
What am I looking at?
It's the calendar.
The calendar, I'm sorry.
Mr. Henderson, with his unveiling.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. The proposed 1920 calendar was developed in collaboration with Almar County Public Schools. Our person on the calendar development was Ms. Paul Culver Dickinson, and she's here to share with you the facets of the calendar development and answer any questions you might have.
Chairman Wade, members of the board, Dr. Atkins, good evening. I'd like to first recognize the committee members that served on the Charlottesville team. That was Dr. Eric Erizari from CHS. From Beaufort Middle School, we had Brandy Walker. From Venable, we had Dr. Erin Kirchner. From Johnson Elementary, we had Christina Esposito. And from Burley Moran, we had our fabulous parent representative, Ms. Vicki Vess. When I look through this, I'd like to go ahead and just walk you through it, so answer any questions that you might have. Any questions that you have that I can't answer, I'll be happy to get those answers for you and get back to you on it. This calendar was shared out. This calendar was shared out with the community. The feedback that we got back indicated a high level of support for it. In fact, eighty-two point eight percent of the individuals that responded indicated their support for this calendar. So, let's just go ahead and start on it. It should look relatively familiar to what we've done in the past, but there's a few tweaks around the edges.
Just to clarify, the county is, this is the draft calendar that the county is also proposing?
This is absolutely the identical draft calendar that the county is proposing. Perfect. We started with our preschool weeks, looking at what are the needs of our new teachers. So, we have new teacher orientation, three days, August 7th through 9th. And then, we lead up to the work at the schools in pre-week and the two professional learning days. The first day of school would be then August 21st. Going on, we will have in school and then we do have Labor Day on September the 2nd. And then, we moved our professional learning day that typically takes place about the 20th of September. We moved it back a little bit to the 30th of September. This, oh, glad to act it. It should give us a little bit more time to make sure that we're getting all of our data in, that we're giving teachers opportunities to try some things and to get some feedback about changes that we can make and additional supports that they might need. October would be a month that is completely unencumbered in terms of any breaks or vacations. We are closing out the first semester then on the 31st of October. And then, we will have our first, I'm sorry, our fourth professional learning day would be on November 1st. Teacher Work Day on the 4th and the 5th, which also will allow for elections and to have, so that our schools will be available. At the end of November, we've got our three days for Thanksgiving break. And then, we come back for three full weeks and then we have our two full week of winter holidays. Looking further into January, what you will see there on the 17th is both the end of the first semester, which gives us 90 days in that first semester, and we would have a half-day of professional learning that would be school-based professional learning. On that, we've got a teacher, I'm sorry, a student holiday on January the 20th and then a teacher work day on the 21st. That will allow for report cards, parent-teacher conferences, everything we're kind of going through there. February would be a month, here again, this is when we've moved the professional learning day that typically takes place in February. We moved that to March the 2nd because March of 2020 is a presidential primary. That will allow us to go ahead and vacate our buildings for the primaries on March the 3rd and putting our professional learning day in on Monday, kind of avoided that awkward, you're in school, you're out of school, you're in school, you're out of school. So, we thought it, it kind of consolidated and met the needs all the way around. April the 3rd then would be our second early release day, but this one would not be intended for school-based professional learning. This really, the second half of that day would be a teacher work day because that's also the end of the third nine weeks. That allows them to go ahead and take care of report cards going into their spring break. Then, we come back and here we go, May 25th, Memorial Day. Wow, that year went by fast. Tentative graduation date of June the 4th and then our last day of school would be a half-day on June the 5th.
Wow. Time flies.
Time flies when you're on a piece of paper. Are there any questions or comments or...
I just, I really like the solid chunks of time because I feel like sometimes we have a couple of days. Anyway, it just, I think this looks...
It's more cohesive.
Yeah.
Looks really good to me.
Oh, thank you.
A lot of work went into this.
Thank you. It was a great committee. It was a great effort, so...
You know what I really like is like you've combined a Friday with a Monday and Tuesday. So, it's like, it's not that we come back for a day and then we have to, you know, how we always seem to, so, I really...
Yeah. Like, for example, this year for Christmas, y'all may have discussed this while I was gone, that we are, I guess, going through the 20th to the end of the week.
21st.
And I think the county is getting off on the 19th and coming back, I mean, everyone's still going to get the same amount of days, but I think they're coming back a few days. But we just kind of get that solid two weeks, so, but yeah.
Yeah, we set a really high priority to make sure that we were completely cohesive on this. That was one of the recurring themes that we hear and also because of K-Tech. Not that we can't work around it, we can, but, but we definitely tried to start there to make sure.
So, this is a first draft, so we're, we approve it in January, is that the, or are we looking for action tonight?
No, not action tonight. It's for you all to consider. It was actually the second draft though, but for approval in January, January.
So, we...
Yeah, well, we want to make sure that the county doesn't have any questions that then changes the dynamics. So, yeah, I think this looks really good.
Great.
Thank you for your efforts.
Any other questions? It looks good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we get to the budget update.
So, there we go. Thanks, Leslie. Leslie, is it okay if I push the buttons up here on the slides? Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Wade, members of the board, Dr. Atkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, budget development is a significant annual process for us all and so it's worth taking just a few moments to remind ourselves what's ahead and, and kind of get calibrated for, for another good development process.
Budget development is really all about allocating resources and this chart is, or this image just reflects a lot of the different priorities that are top of mind for us right now as a school division when you consider all the different goals and priorities that we, we talk about frequently. So, it's really, it's all about, it's an, as we get moved through this, let's just remember, it's just, it's a big process to make important decisions about allocating resources. In the course of that process, it, it takes a lot of input. It's a collaborative process and it starts with the principals and coordinators. And that process started last month in earnest and we are consolidating all of the input from the school buildings and from the programs. And then, from here, we ramp up pretty quickly through the process. A lot of important dates are reflected in the blue boxes there. But as you all well know, the school board has quite a few meetings and work sessions in, over the next several months. And those work sessions and board meetings are, always have an opportunity for public input. But as Chairman Wade mentioned during his opening comments, we also engage, you all engage the community all the time in impromptu ways. So, and that's important. That's, the, the school and school community involvement is very important. We also intentionally reach out to the school community, not just through the board meetings, but also through the school PTOs and you'll see the meeting dates and locations there in the blue box. And then, we also do some very intentional outreach to the PTO presidents and we leverage them as a resource to also get input from the larger community. And the goal of all this collaboration is to build as much common understanding as we can to move forward in making these decisions. So, it's always helpful, at least for me, to think month by month, what is our focus as we move ahead. In December, we, we focus a lot on just understanding trends and where we are relative to history and different goals we have. And then, part of the, one of the very important trends we look at in December when we're looking at the data is enrollment, what's happening with those numbers. And this meeting for December, the work session is scheduled for December 19th. And then, in January, we, we're not looking at, you know, we, we take less of a look of, okay, history to present. In January, we start saying, okay, with all the different things that are on the table, how do we start to shape this into a preliminary proposal? By February, a proposal is coming before the school board to approve by the end of the month because in March, it goes to city council and then the process wraps up in April when city council takes final action on the city budget. So, that's just a high-level overview. This is the detailed calendar and this is available to the public online through our website, but it gives you each date and the location for each of these meetings. So, looking forward to another robust process to help allocate our resources effectively to reach our goals the, the best way we possibly can. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I have no questions. All right.
It's very clear and your graphics, as usual, are outstanding.
I have to say, Renee Hoover prepared that presentation. She's been very, very busy. Yeah.
You're going to stay up to do that?
I will remain at the podium for the next agenda item if that's okay.
I have a question, please. Leslie, will you be sending out the doodle poll for these meetings? Sure. Oh, you did, sorry.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking, like, I haven't got, I will look again. Sorry.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
I guess many people have responded.
Yeah. No?
Okay, so, any other...
We're happy that you're guiding this ship, Kim. And really, I, I think, you know, it's, it's a really complicated process and there are, you know, there's so many issues and balancing priorities and, and it really is helpful to have you at the helm with this.
Thank you. It's a, it's truly a team effort, there's no doubt, but I'm happy to work with such a good team.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving into the next agenda item, before we move ahead developing the budget for next year, of course, we're in the middle of, almost literally in the middle of FY19 budget. Let's take a moment to look at the official wrap-up of last budget year, which was fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. The audit reports are final and when it comes to the life of the school division, there's an annual audit for the, the school activity funds. That's the money that's at the school level, that's done through fundraising and collection of dues and fees and things like that. That's called, those are the school activity funds. There's a separate audit for that than what is called the school division audit, which is part of the city's CAFR. That's a significant annual report. And then, the result of all of the audits, the result of that process of developing the CAFR determines what our fund balance is moving into the next fiscal year. And so, I'm going to give you an overview of each of those things. Our audit firms, the auditor for the city of Charlottesville is Brown Edwards. So, they do, they conduct the school division audit and the school activity fund audit is conducted by Robertson Farmer Cox. And prior to this meeting, the finance committee met. You have two members of the board representing you on that committee, Ms. Purrier and Mr. Bryant. Dr. Atkins is involved with that as well and myself and Renee Hoover. And so, the auditors, a partner from each audit firm came this evening and gave a detailed review of each report and provided the committee an opportunity to ask any, any questions. Happy to report we had a clean audit. And so, looking ahead to the, the numbers, at the end of last fiscal year, we had net revenue of $312,828. When the gain-share agreement comes, the gain-share agreement with the city comes into play with that. So, the first $100,000 goes to the school's small cap fund or what's called the school repair fund. That's where the first $100,000 goes. The second $100,000 is retained by the schools. And then, whatever is remaining, which for the end of last year was $112,828, that amount is split equally between the schools and the city. So, that's $56,414 each. So, at the beginning of last fiscal year, when we wrapped up fiscal year 2017, the fund balance was $625,996 with the addition of the $156,414 to fund balance. That means our fund balance going into this fiscal year is $782,410. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do need to say that it was particularly interesting year, wrapping up the old year on the old system, starting up the new year on the new system. Renee, her leadership and attention to detail through that whole process was, wasn't as outstanding. So, very, very grateful. It was a good audit and I believe, also, just asking your fellow board members about the committee meeting, you know, any of us are happy to answer your questions.
Can you just remind us, because I have heard this 100 times, but what an appropriate fund balance is and given our budget that this is inappropriate because of the, it is supposed to be within this percentage?
Yes, and I wish I brought to the podium with me my, one of the handouts from the auditor because he actually gave a review of the audit, of the fund balances from other localities. We are less than a half a percent of our budget, which is well within, within tolerance. I don't, when you do research on what is an appropriate fund balance for operating funds or health insurance funds, you can see some pretty varied opinions, but certainly, you know, 10% or less is, and we are not even at a percent. So, our fund balance doesn't give the auditors any calls for pause and he, he just handed it to us tonight, but he, they take all their clients, comparable school clients, and they give a snapshot of the different fund balances. And for those that are allowed to keep or have a fund balance, we are well within norm or I would say below the norm.
Well, thank you for your careful stewardship of those balances. I know it takes effort and there's a lot of science in there, so I appreciate y'all, your team and your approach to the fund balance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you, Kim. I'd also like to ask Ms. Hoover, would you please come up and give us an overview of how you think the budget went to this year? Renee Hoover has done an outstanding job, helping and a very important part of the transition team from our old legacy system to our new system. And she has worked very closely with the auditors in making sure that the audit was done and provided anything that they needed. And her hand is, her signature is in every aspect of our budget, so...
Yes, ma'am. It was a very interesting summer that we had. We brought our new system online on July 1st. So, was very heavily involved with the aspects of payroll and council payable with that system. So, when we were pulling together the fiscal year, we were going back to the old system, pulling schedules together. It was kind of like two jobs of actually bringing the system, implementing the system all over again, along with doing the regular job. So, it was a lot of complex, a lot of work, but we're hoping that will go smoother in the coming year.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item that we have on the agenda, there's no other discussion about that, is the recruitment and retention, Mitsko.
Good evening.
Good evening.
He told me he was going to introduce me, but that's all right. I don't need an introduction.
Oh, no. He's like, no, you got this.
Introduce yourself. I will introduce myself.
You need no introduction.
I do not need an introduction. And while the presentation loads, good evening. My name is Mitsko Clemens Nazir and I serve as your new assistant director for human resources. And it is definitely an honor to present to you a recruitment update.
Are we loading?
Here. We're loading, loading. We're going to refresh. We got it, we got it on our laptops here.
There you go.
Thank you. So, while that is loading, I will bring your attention to, I brought it all with me, okay? So, we have a presentation, but to my left, what you are seeing is part of that presentation and this is the new look for Charlottesville City Schools and how we are branding ourselves while on the road, recruiting, attending different events, and attracting new employees to our division. We are very appreciative that you, the school board, have invested in the human resources department for all the support, time, and energy to participate in this very important work of creating positive growth, work experiences for our employees and role models and learns and safe experiences for our students. These past four months as a team has been a great professional opportunity for us. Your human resources... We understand that one aspect of our Human Resources work is in the area of recruiting and retaining and hiring. This evening, we hope to bring to you an update with what we've already done thus far, a look at our short-term goals, and then a glimpse of what we're looking for as far as our long-term goals. Most of the information relates to teacher education or teacher recruitment. So if you've ever seen a Prezi before, you'll see that your eyes will jump a bit, so I'm just giving you guys the heads up, okay? So to get started, we're guided by the Division's strategic plan to recruit and retain excellent employees. Therefore, we are committed to becoming an inclusive employer of choice, where we build a community of ambassador recruiters to attract and retain the best educator talent for leadership at all levels, every learner, every day, everyone. In creating this plan, we must understand our story and with what the state and local findings and data with what we're working. We spend a great deal of time thus far gathering information through surveys, research, informational interviews, informal interviews. I'd like to thank Beth Chuck for providing the local data in this slide that you see in front of you here. The state data comes from Dr. Staples, former Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, his presentation on teacher shortages. The information we gathered tells us a realistic story, that in this area, era, excuse me, of teacher shortages and achievement gaps, there's a stronger need to create a more inclusive organization where the teaching adult role models are a closer racial and cultural match to the demographics of the student body that they serve. It is about equity, and it definitely speaks to what Dr. Atkins had mentioned earlier in previous dialogue. So as Ms. Perrier says, yes, we have much to do. We look at this challenge as an opportunity and look forward to working on deliverables. We recommend on using a mixed methodological approach to make this happen by recruiting and retaining simultaneously. This challenge will require a total division buy-in to be successful. We will continue to retain and treat our current employees in a culturally responsive way with respect and support and order for recruitment and hiring practices to be fruitful. Ultimately, as you know, current employees are the best representatives for an organization and will likely share their experiences with others. Dr. Blair was so kind to share with me a recent report, a leak in the pipeline. The Frontline Research and Learning Institute shared some unexpected findings about the relationship between the ways that teacher candidates learn about open positions and the likelihood that school districts will hire them. Teachers who report that they've been referred to school districts by word of mouth are 2.5 times more likely to get a job than peers who are referred to through their job board sites. This doesn't mean that we won't concentrate on that, but it does mean that we need to work on the language that we use and how we promote ourselves as an organization. So we need to recruit and retain simultaneously. And without doing so, it will be likely an inefficient process and might cause high turnover. It's like a bottom-out effect. So let's talk about what we've done thus far to make all of this happen. This next slide celebrates our contributions. In just four months, we've done a lot. We've listened and built relationships with our employees. We've participated in community forums. We've heard what our employees and our community has to say. We're out in schools and departments, working with our employees and building professional relationships with them. We've also conducted some surveys and interviews on work experiences to help guide our practice. Second, we've updated our systems. As you all know, we currently use Power Schools Talent Ed modules, which includes an online application. We're maximizing the utilization of these systems by streamlining our processes. We've created and implemented a requisition form, a hire form, a new instructional application, reference forms, ways to track. We're ready to report on some items now. And as you see here, one of the aspects of Talent Ed is to actually use the career fair module that's associated. So now a candidate, as they come up to the table to meet and greet the recruiters or the ambassadors, they can now pick up this iPad or any of the devices that are on the table, I've also used iPhones, and literally sign in to express their interest in our organization, okay? And so we're able to gather this information and turn back to it later on.
So they can pick, they can like put in their email or things like that?
Email, contact information, all the things that they might have historically written down. But now we have it all electronically. It's stored in the Talent Ed system, and we're using the module that we're paying for.
Ms. Clemens Nazir.
Please.
Please. Show the board the little, it looks like a gift that you're giving to potential applicants and the use, how they would use that.
So right here, these are, you know, everyone has giveaways, you know, when you come up to a recruitment table. And so what we've done is we've transformed paper into electronic use. So eventually, what I'm going to share later on is one of the things that we would love to invest in is a recruitment video highlighting the experiences of our employees and things. These right here, this is a giveaway that we hand out, and these are earbuds. So ideally, what's going to happen is, and I can't go away from the mic because I'm trying to do that. So ideally, what will happen is a candidate can hook the earbuds up to any of the devices that we have here and listen to the video.
Thanks.
If you care to. And we're making it sanitary. There's enough to pass out for all of the recruitment trips as well. And you all will benefit from getting one of these later on. So the third thing that we have there is improved our recruitment materials. And as you can see here, we have definitely done that. I'm sorry that Mr. Faust isn't here, but I'd like to send a shout-out to Jeff Faust and the IT team. They've advised Human Resources on the best technologies. So we've recently updated and purchased devices, and we're now utilizing this interactive recruitment experience at recruitment fairs and events to meet our candidates. We've even established, and we're using a Twitter account for recruitment. And I know that, our Twitter handle is @SevilleSchoolsHR, and I know that Ms. McKeever already follows us. And I know that we already have presence on the school board from Ms. Perrier and Mr. Bryant and Ms. Lawford and Ms. McKeever and Dr. Atkins. So we know you're on Twitter, and we need you to follow us so that you can be in the loop with regarding all of the openings and vacancies that we will have and any other events that we'll be having as well with regard to Human Resources. Here we go. You got to do it, okay? Follow now.
Give a break for that.
Right? And last, we're currently piloting a screening interview for secondary school positions. The screening questions and hiring rubric were created by Human Resources, Dr. Irosari at Charlottesville High School, and Stephanie Carter at Beaufort Middle. So this basically requires an applicant who's going to come in and express an interest in Charlottesville City Schools, take part in a screening interview, so that we will be able to identify the best candidates and be able to send them to both Beaufort and Charlottesville High School. All of this is done electronically. Dr. Kraft, are you on now? There you are. Thank you.
I'm following you.
There you go. Okay. Next, we've revised our recruitment schedule. We've revised the recruitment schedule and assessed its functionality and established a budget for recruitment. I'll go on to further detail about recruitment in the next slides. Next, we've participated in recruitment events themselves. For 2018, we've already participated in three fairs, the Virginia Association of School Personnel Administrators, the Historical Black Colleges, Black College and University Career Development Marketplace, and the National Association of Black School Educators Exhibit Fair. We've presented in UVA's Science Education Methods class. And as Mr. Bryant already said, he too was a part of serving as a career ambassador by presenting at Mary Bowens Education Major. So we thank you for that. Last, on this slide here, we are planning to extend offers sooner than later. The culminating celebratory piece in this goal, before we go on break, we will extend four early intents in hard-to-fill areas of math, English, and elementary education. And we'd like to add this to the already two early intents offered prior to my arrival. So we're really excited about that. Here it is. This is Recruitment 2018-2019. Each organization of schools' logo represents who we'll be partnering with this year. You'll see a condensed version from the one from last year, because this year, we're trying to spend time studying our return on investment and working more on quality and not quantity. You'll see that we'll be attending fairs for private organizations, but you'll also see the logos for some of the historical black colleges and universities and the predominantly white schools, again, with an emphasis on hiring more teachers of color and diversifying the organization as a whole for leadership at all levels. I want to just go ahead and point out, you see that in the middle of that slide, there's a beautiful picture of Charlottesville City Schools' own Katrina Lee, who serves as one of our supervisors in the area of special education. And she serves as one of our ambassador recruiters. I had a wonderful time experiencing the HBCU Career Development Marketplace with her. But the candidate who is standing to her right is a current Virginia State student who's studying communications with an emphasis on public relations. What makes this candidate special is that she also attended Johnson Elementary School when she was in second and third grade. And so she was so kind as to come and visit the Charlottesville School to Able and share her appreciation for the support that she was given when she was a student. And she also expressed an interest in working in the area of public relations and will be volunteering her time once we make this connection with our PR department and hopefully adding to some expertise in developing a recruitment video for us. So there we have it. I can't get into details as to why we chose some of these organizations, but again, it's As you see here, this next slide is one of the African-American Teaching Fellows. Since 2007, the African-American Teaching Fellows has served as a conduit or channel to the divisions of Charlottesville City Schools as well as Albemarle County. Historically, the county schools has been able to benefit a great deal by the exceptional teachers the program supports. Three-fourths of those graduating fellows actually have been hired by Albemarle County, but now it's time to shift. So the cities have been actively involved in the organization for the 2018-2019 school year. We now have Ms. Lisa Torres, who will serve as one of the board members for AATF. Kendra King, Eric Johnson, and I will serve on different committees for the organization. Dr. Atkins and some principals. And I have taken part in professional development opportunities like conducting mock interviews, facilitation of workshops, and participation in a Facebook chat for prospective fellows. So we definitely look forward to nurturing this relationship as well. Just have two more slides. In the short time that I've worked with this organization, I've been very honored to work with some of the best student-centered, talented employees. So moving forward, we hope to collaborate, and we recommend the following short-term goals. Again, we're going to concentrate on building relationships, professional relationships, and collaborating, and really utilizing and maximizing the talents of our current employees. We're looking forward to partnering with our student and family engagement facilitator, Ms. Velvet Coleman. We'll be looking at working with our coordinator for professional learning, and then also engaging more in conversation and work with public relations. We are going to target hard-to-fill areas. We will look to promote some racial diversity within our workforce. We will look at special education, world languages, ESOS-endorsed candidates, math, and dual-endorsed teachers. Our new employment application now has a skills section, which captures the world languages that candidates possess. So this ties into, Ms. Lawford, what you had mentioned earlier about having translators. Now we can even identify that in our workforce and candidates that we'll be bringing onboard. We will continue to develop systems and recruitment materials. As I shared before, we'll work on recruitment branding in the form of a recruitment video and updating our web presence. And last, on this slide, we are going to work on some training, conduct supervisor and interviewer training. This will allow us to stay in compliance and confidence to send representatives who will be responsible for hiring from our division as ambassadors and recruiters for this organization. Our long-term goals, we will continue to study our community. What we really need to, and what we are planning to advise, is that we need to own the idea that recruitment can't go on the shoulders of one person or one department. If we care about our organization, then all of us will make contributions to this very important work of providing role models for each child. Two, we'll work on community building and Grow Your Own or Teacher Conduit programs. Several high school graduates and students and current instructional assistants are interested in going into the teaching profession. We've recently written a budget initiative for instructional assistants for an instructional assistance academy for our current IAs to pursue degrees and licensure. And we'd like to consider a teacher cadet interest program for high school students. The next thing there, in the last piece there, is mentoring programs can be used as an excellent retention tool. So in tandem with our awesome instructional coaching model led by Mr. Henderson, we hope to lend more support to our teachers in interest to retain them. So in conclusion, we look forward to these challenges that the work brings by guiding and leading the division in developing talent and ambassadors for Charlottesville City Schools. We're already one step closer to making all of this happen for every learner, every day, and everyone. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I just had a couple of comments, and I'm sure others as well. First, I really like the comprehensive approach that you all have taken, just, you know, and I think the one and last thing you said is not on the shoulder of one person, that, you know, it's the whole division responsibility. In particular, how you're pulling in, you know, former students who had a connection with the system. That's one thing that I heard a lot at our meetings, is that, you know, there are former students and things. And not necessarily, this young lady doesn't appear to be in education, but it is still a way that you all will bring her back to contribute. And maybe she might change her mind down the road and go in that Mary Bowens program or something like that to become a teacher. I do have a kind of a crystal ball question for you. Where do you see the recruitment and retention, let's say, four or five years from now? Because I know you basically just got here and there was some exciting things going on. What, once you kind of, the dust settles, that you really would like to see happen?
Ideally, as I presented, it's more about collaboration. It's more about utilizing the talents that we have within our organization and build capacity to recruit. I would love to see a closer racial, cultural shift.
Because I know you basically just got here and there was some exciting things going on. What, once you kind of the dust settles, did you really would like to see happen?
Ideally, as I presented, it's more about collaboration. It's more about utilizing the talents that we have within our organization and build capacity to recruit. I would love to see a closer racial-cultural shift, matching our role models, our teacher role models, to the students that they're serving or that we are all serving. So, that is a goal. I have not, we have not attached a percentage to the number, but that is a goal that we are definitely working towards.
Thank you. Yeah, Jennifer?
I was just, the one area, I mean, I feel like you touched on a lot of areas, and I appreciate that, is the retention after year two, I think, is, between three and five, we lose a lot of professionals, and I'm not 100% sure how to stop that. But, I think, you know, if we're building a more diverse pool of teachers, then we really need to be thinking strategically how we're going to actually keep them for longer than two years. And I feel like the AATF is a great tool, especially for new teachers, and for bringing teachers into our community, but how we keep them, I think, really is going to need to be a strategic focus of our whole community, and I really, one, we, just looking at some of the comments from the teacher, what is this called? Teacher Forum Comments Consolidated. Just in terms of, there were some great comments about like, how do we grow our IAs into teachers? And we could, you know, because we talk a lot about, we've talked a lot about growing our students into our, to teachers, which is a great long-term goal, but we actually have adults in our classrooms who we could partner maybe with the city or our community in some way to get them their certification to teach. So, I feel like there's some really great ideas floating around, and maybe, I really liked that one about the IAs and bringing them, if they are interested in pursuing their teacher certificate, how we can support them professionally, because we really do have a growth mindset in the city. So, it just seems like a really natural place to kind of, you know, hold people's hands through that process. And then, just the three-to-five-year mark, I think, is such a key. Losing all of that development is what hurts, I think, our community, because we've developed and fostered that relationship, they fostered relationships with our children, and then they leave our community, and that's, so focusing very strategically on how we're going to keep teachers that we're bringing in, I would really love to see that as a high priority. And that's, I don't, I think it's a high priority. I'm not suggesting that's not, but I'd love to see some, like, action items for how we plan to do that. Okay.
Sherry?
Just a quick question. I heard a brief mention of something for high school, high school students who might be interested, and could you say a little more about that?
As we explore career development and student interests, one of the things that we could probably hone in a little bit on is the idea of teacher education programs, just as we would introduce students, STEM, research, different careers. You know, this is a very noble profession to be a part of, and a lot of students have an interest in continuing to serve their communities, and it will come in the form of being an educator, being a teacher.
I think that'd be great, if we could do that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Mrs. Nazir, what do you see our largest, our greatest challenge? People talk about retention, but often, retention may not necessarily mean leaving. It may be, I need more money, so I'm a great teacher, and all of a sudden, I'd get the certification to be an administrator. And just because you're a good instructor doesn't mean you're a good administrator. That retention would move from the classroom to another level. How do you see retention, and do you have any models and/or suggestions how, if we are in the classroom and we are doing well in the classroom, to encourage those individuals to stay there? Would that be a board responsibility for more monies, certain types of incentives? How do you see that?
I think mentoring will play a huge part, and making connections with people will play a huge part in what we do. I haven't spent enough time working with teachers in particular, daily time. I've been in all of our schools, I've heard from teachers, but I think that mentoring piece and making connections with people are going to be crucial. The other piece, I think, that will be helpful, especially with regard to our teachers of color, really showing that support will be helpful in the form of culturally responsive teaching and methodology, building our cultural competency capacity within ourselves as individuals, whether, regardless of what color you might be, or what race or cultural background, but I think those are some really crucial things. Ideally, I found that our teachers and employees are happy to be here, but I think that they could definitely benefit from some, some, again, cultural competency, some training, maybe, professional studies, and then, again, just making connections and building relationships just within the talents that we have here in Charlottesville City Schools.
Well, with that being said, and we are going into budget season, we're talking about everything from A to Z, particularly in the area of implicit bias, cultural competencies, equity, yada, yada. I would hope that you and your team would have an opportunity to develop a budget or an ask in order that we look at that, because that may be a part of what we need to consider when we're talking about moving forward, and I think that needs to come from people that have that area of expertise. And I will close in saying someone that you know very closely, who is a CHS alum and an HR specialist who no longer recruits, was always happy whenever she was recruiting, and certain people from the school division where she graduated were recruiting, and going over to the table and being excited to see them and telling other people about how great the Charlottesville City Schools were. And so, whenever those opportunities arise, it's very nice to have those people come over to the table.
I would also expect us to do some proactive recruiting and not standing by a table. We need to really get out and about. We need to make some connections with our community and abroad, but first and foremost, we need to take care of our family that exists inside.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nazir.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Actually, sorry. You know, when we've been talking about the IAs, I also was wondering if we could be doing something with the long-term subs, because they're clearly interested, or, you know, if we have a substitute that just keeps coming back and coming back. And then, I was also wondering with the AATF, it occurs to me, is there ability to, you know, help them with their interviewing skills, even if they're done with the program? You know, how much do we stay connected with these fellows after they've been through the program?
You said with the African-American Teaching Fellows? African-American Teaching Fellows, the way that the program basically works is, the community would invest in these individual students that have already completed part of their education programs, and so, the funding comes to support them to finish either a teacher licensure program or to get a degree that's associated with a teacher licensure program. Their obligation is to pay back in service the amount of funding that they got. So, if they got one year full-time funding, then they would owe one year full-time in service. I have found that fellows have stayed around. They've definitely feel that they're investing in the community, and they want to be a part of that growth and development that happens within their community, and basically be there when their students that they started with are graduating. So, the organization has done a great job retaining the fellows that have actually come into the divisions, but I think that it is definitely a responsibility of the organization or the division that they'll be working with to help retain them as well and provide that additional support. You know, once they go on, if they fulfill their obligation, their service obligation, they do have a choice to leave the community. I just have found that, that most of them have stayed.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Look forward to what's to come. The next item on the agenda are kind of responses to board reports. Does anyone have any questions on, or comments on those two reports? If not, I'm going to go into comments from members of the community. It's another opportunity for the public to come up and speak.
Hi.
Hello?
My name is Diane McNeil. Just one question point concerning the Fairfax Equity Policy. Has the board looked at any other locality?
Yeah.
And if so, which ones?
We're doing research right now, Ms. Neil, on other school divisions in the Commonwealth and other school divisions across the country who have policies, and we're compiling those. We did just receive from Cube, which is an organization that deals with equity, some of the policies that they found across the country also.
Yeah. Part of the direction we gave the superintendent was that, you know, if I meet on the 23rd to kind of gather some of that information, it sounds like a lot of us have already kind of gone onto our site to squirrel down and get some of that information as well. So, I think Fairfax is this kind of one we were using as the model for discussion today, but we're going to be looking at a lot of them. Are there other public comments?
Hi there. I forgot to mention that I'm in Gordonsville now. I know we have to give our addresses, so I'm in Gordonsville, Co. Lepel. I'm curious to see how the tentative one Charlottesville policy development process drives the 2017-2023 strategic plan and vice versa, and I'm glad to see the partnership that is being forged with AATF. And just curious if the board has any information on where those podcasts went to. There were over 100, basically, all of our digital podcasts from 2009 to November 2015 have a 404 error message. They're not there, because that was where there was good process of how the board handled a lot of the issues that you're dealing with now. It was good effort, and that's part of process of, I think we can, nothing is perfect, nothing is sometimes a straight arrow, and we take different paths of how we get to our goals, and a lot of that was there. So, I would be curious to know where those went, up in the clouds somewhere?
Yeah, hopefully, we'll get Leslie to talk with Jeff or, you know, I'm sure it's out there somewhere, we just need to...
We'll take a look, and I'll talk with Jeff.
Okay. Thank you.
See if we house them or we pass them on.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? If not, we're going to go to the board comments, and this is an opportunity for those who didn't speak, you know, about the VSBA conference, and if you want to speak about that, now it's an opportunity. I'll start on my right. Freitas, I know you still might be going like, whoa, but, you know, if you can, feel free to chime in any time. If you don't have anything now, go to Lisa.
I'm okay right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sherry, you have anything?
Um, Mr. Chair...
You can.
Yeah, it's my turn. So, Mr. Chair, while everyone else was attending the Equity Workshop, because Cube is also looking at school safety, we know what Cube is all about, the Council of Urban Board Educators, and for those of you that are listening or watching, their primary focus is equity, but they are also now looking at school safety. The consideration is, in addition to equity, how does school safety play into that or not, and making certain that the rules, regulations, policies, all of those types of things are done in an equitable fashion, because many people are impacted by that. And we did have a workshop at VSBA dealing with school safety, so I had to be in two places at one time, so I thought we were covered on equity. So, I did school safety, and I'll be keeping you updated on that and how that goes. In addition, I had an opportunity to moderate a panel, and that particular panel dealt with pre-K through 12, as it related to education and techniques and things that their particular school division, and I want to say, New Kent County, maybe? Okay, I think it was, and how they were going in to do particular things in order to help those students as it related to their academic abilities and their achievement and things of that nature. So, I have information from that, and I felt that that would be helpful, and also sat in on the workshop with Sherry.
Jane?
Amy.
Okay.
So, I attended, well, you know, as many as we all attend, whatever, but I thought the most important thing I wanted to bring up was, there's a new way that Spotsylvania County is writing their IEPs, and it's more about not, because of course, we have our categories of disabilities. Actually, it's Katrina, oh, you are still here. Perfect. It's not just looking at the disability, but what is the brain function that is affected by that disability, and then looking at the brain function, and then what is like the tools that we have that can help support that child? And they call it the LOVE Program. I immediately emailed her. It's Ms. Richardson. She is incredible, and I would really strongly suggest that we bring her not only to our school division, but to the prep board, and in fact, we had four prep board members there at that, and it was so impactful, because it's not talking about ability, it's talking about how the brain works and how the tools we have to support them, and it's totally changing the language. So, I'd really, I'd like to match us up with them. And the other thing, actually, two things I thought were really important, communication with school divisions and community. I have lots of ideas. I know we're going to be talking about this further, but there's so many different ways to showcase what we're doing in our school division every day, every month, and people take in information in such different ways now. So, you know, Louisa County was at this, where they have, the superintendent does once a week, a small video of what happened that week, you know? Actually, and what happened is they started putting this up on their Facebook. They never get people to come to the meetings, they never really get any, but they have like 3,000 people following that video. So...
And you saw Dr. Atkins with Ms. Velvet Coleman.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we could do, yeah.
It's just a real shepherd. You know, and actually, in that video, he was telling me, they try to highlight a teacher, a student, and a community member, so it really brings in people, too. And I think what we were talking about is highlighting the successes of so many of our kids and staff, and so, lots of ideas there. And, you know, the other things, actually, and the best one was, why does public school have a negative perception? And the guy was fascinating, the woman from Orange County School Board, we talked about trying to bring him in and talk to, you know, did you guys talk to him?
We did a regional meeting.
Right, the regional meeting, because, you know, he showcased really taking us back to the very beginning of public education, and what was his purpose, and then bringing us through, you know, modern technology at that time was the farm, right? We got tractors and pesticides and herbicides, and how that really shifted our culture into really more education, and what is happening in our country to always, you know, this negative perception is ridiculous. By the way, $25 million are spent every year in our country feeding hungry children in public schools, with 8 million employees, and 50 million children are served in public education. And if you are going to be getting out of poverty, you probably went to a public And if you are going to be getting out of poverty, you probably went to a public school, because this is the truth about public schools. And it was so, it was just really, he did it in a way that was also really fun, but really showing the trends of, you know, why these perceptions keep happening. And one thing he was talking about is, people do not want to pay taxes these days, because they have credit card debt that is so insurmountable. Their wage may be the same or even higher, but because of that debt, they feel like they have less. And then they want to pay less for public education, other things. But I mean, it was just really, it shows you, it was really interesting. So I would love to get that guy to come with a regional discussion. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Other board?
I also want to welcome, publicly welcome Frida to the board. Looking forward to your wonderful presence. I just want to take time to thank the community for all the wonderful comments that are placed on the Equity, from the Equity Forum online. I try to take some time out of my schedule each night to read those comments, and certainly there's a lot of powerful and valuable information that certainly will guide the board in terms of us dealing with equity and diversity. So I want to thank the community, give a shout out to the community for that. Also, if you have not had an opportunity to provide comment, please do so, we encourage you to do so. And finally, Mitsiko, is she still here? Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation in the HR department, I like it. It's 21st century, it's up to date, we're going to get some great teachers, and you all are on the move. Thank you so much for that outstanding presentation. I have firsthand knowledge of her great work, because she hired me many years ago in the county. So I know she is going to.
Oh, yeah.
So she's going to bring that great work from the county to the city schools. She's already doing so, so thank you. And finally, if you all are so inclined, on January 13th at 2:00 PM at the John Paul Jones Arena, I will be singing the national anthem at the UVA Women's Basketball Game.
All right.
So come and support your fellow board members. And leave a little shout out.
Oh, yes, I'll give a shout out.
Thank you so much.
Did you want us to sing with you, or?
No, you really don't. I promise.
I'll take a picture and tweet it out.
Congratulations, James.
Yes, that's great. Other board comments? If not, the superintendent comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to highlight a few accomplishments of students and teachers. At the Virginia School Boards Association, November 14th, we had two of our school board representatives to attend the conference, Zion Bryant and Cole Fairchild. They attended the student representative, the school board's student representative workshops, and we thanked them for doing that. I happened to run into them in the hallway as soon as I arrived at the conference, and they told me they had a good time, that they enjoyed the session and enjoyed meeting some of the other students. And they were really ready to get back to school, had a lot of work to do. And thank you also to the guidance counselor, guidance secretary, counselor, who brought them down, who drove them down, Ms. Brandy Underwood. We thank you for doing that. And thank you to our school board members who also participated in that conference. On November 13th, at Walker, congratulations to the Walker team. They had their first, what will become an annual international day. And it was really nice watching the students represent their different cultures, their different countries. And each student brought something in from their country and from their culture, either a food item, or pictures, or a combination of the food and the pictures, or clothing, or something that represented their culture. And parents were there with the students, helping them to present. So thank you to everyone who participated in that fun day for the students and for our families. I'll also echo, I think Mr. Wade talked about Louisa County, their career and technical education program. We just thank the entire staff in Louisa, and thank them so much for inviting us and presenting to us how they coordinated the career and technical education services. Dr. Iraziri attended that meeting with us, Daphne Kaiser, Dr. Kaiser was there also from our K-Tech program. And they presented us with a really attractive way to present the career and technical education information, and I know we'll benefit from their model. So thank you a lot. And my last comment is, congratulations to one of our former teachers, Vincent Tornello. Many of us have fond memories, and many of you may have even more memories than I have, I'm sure. I think Ms. Stacker was one of his students. Vince Tornello was the band director, the renowned band director in Charlottesville City for approximately 30 years, or maybe a little longer. And each year, he received accolades from across the country on the work that he was doing with our band students, all sorts of awards. Very recently, November 30th, he was presented with the Albert Nelson Marquis Lifetime Achievement Award. And that award recognizes his contribution to young people and to communities. In his retirement right now, he is, he devotes his time to adjudication, to being an arranger and a clinician. He continues with the work that he's done for so many years. So just want to say congratulations to Mr. Tornello for continuing to shine throughout our community. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you so much. Kim, was any, was any wrap up? I can't, okay.
So there were two requests. One was to just get additional information about the process Fairfax used in developing their equity policy, and another item about getting additional information about any outcome matrices or matrix that they have associated with their policy. And then there was the comment about the podcasts, the archive of the podcasts, follow-up one. And lastly, getting additional information about the new IEP protocol that they developed in Spotsylvania County. I didn't mention any budget requests, because there's a lot of those that are kind of direct or implied in your discussions.
Okay, thank you. Just quickly, the meetings, upcoming meetings, we are starting that budget process on December 19th with our first work session. January 10th, we're having a regular school board meeting here. The 19th, we're having another work session. The 23rd, we're having that work session with city council, with, yes, with city council. And actually, I see here that it's a budget discussion, but maybe we can try to do both. And then on February 7th, it's a regular school board meeting. And the 12th, it's another budget work session, and the 21st, another budget work session. So there being no objections, we stay adjourned.
We're going to a closed session.
Yeah, we're going in a closed session. Lucky you, you don't have to come. You're done, you can go home.